If I can call the meetings of order, tax income line financing, investment zone, regular meeting. And first item is any public comments? Anyone sign up for the comments, right? Next item is approval of the minutes from the January fourth twenty twenty four meeting.
Motion to accept and deliver.
By John, second my letter, comments, questions? Not all in favor, please say aye. Both sides, aye. Motion carries, yes. Next item, number two is consider appointing members to the tax income financing reinvestments on number one project committee and the right chair. In your packet, there was a list of the proposed members for the project committee with John Keeler as the chair, Steve Wright, the member Blake Pitts, Thomas Cloud, and Bo Harvey. Generation. There have a motion for approval.
Motion agreed.
Motion approval, Tyler, second guy Gary. Questions, discussions, and if not, all in favor, please say aye. Both same time. Look at period's management. Next item is consider appointing members to the tax income financing reinvestments on number one finance committee and like chairs. And that's also in your packet, and I'd like to point out on this one is that Gary Smith has served as a finance chair for decades. Anyway, for a number of years, and we'd like to take a break on that, and he's going to continue to serve on the committee. And in the packet, you'll see that both chair is Tyler Johnson, and Gary Schmidt is a member, Michelle Zutano, and Lester Fett. So I would ask for approval or consideration of that group. Have a motion by Steve, second, second my buddy Pitts.
Thank you, Gary. Lot of work over a lot of years.
Yes.
Lot of others around the table at the same time, though.
And during your tenure there, I think it probably went from about half a million worth of increment to.
It's grown a bit.
It's grown a bit, in the mid thirty million range.
Lot of work still to do.
Yeah, thank you. Anyway, so all in favor, please say aye. Both say aye. Motion carries, you may. Thank you. Okay, next item is receive. Now, car project updates discuss possible future projects, completely not limited to review of current projects and a construction review of projects and design. A review of future projects. And this is the presentation we've talked about, that John has been working on to present and bring us all up to date. It's the one that hopefully brought some snacks.
We can go through this fast, I'm gonna slow down and just not flow through this. We were gonna do this, remember, December meeting, January, and push this one, one month because of the fact that we had so many voting items on that that it would have taken us too long. So this is just every project that we have in our financing plan and that is funded and that we're moving forward. Certainly the opportunity, you know, if anybody wants to weigh in on any of these, please do. Hopefully won't do this again this year. Really what we're gonna be moving to is if you're looking at the last item on this list, number ten, is that twenty forty master plan, in some real terms, when you look from one through nine, it is projects that we currently have under, in our finance plan, under design or under construction, that really reflects on what we did in our twenty thirty master plan, and our concentration for really the next six to eight months is going to really move from, what are we doing today to what do we need to do in the next ten years? And so really, again, probably be the last time this year that we look at each one of our projects. You know, it's gonna start at the top of the financing plan, and this is actually in financing plan order. So if you were to look at this in the future, it's just you can look at the top of your financing plan. This is project number one, the red line at the bottom is a rail spur that goes into East Penn, was part of their whole project. When we brought East Penn in, and we're just hit that point in the project that we gotta go ahead and build that rail spur at two point one eight seven. And so it is, it is to be done here probably after October. Plans are done, they've been sitting on the shelf, ready to go. We've talked to Adrian to make sure that they do want this, and they have said yes. We are looking forward to that going in, so that probably sometime in October, November, you will see us bring, you know, the big plan to get that thing out the door and get it started.
Adrian, so when we do that, does that still service the other track in site sixty four?
Yes, it does have the potential to, absolutely, for the southern portion, another future process.
That's what you, you come off that same spur.
Yeah, so wherever that alignment sets up, we cut in a switch off that spur and then feed them. When we wrote the regs for this park, we can go up to a degree of curve of twelve on this, off those spurs, so we can easily do that.
Yeah, it shows that little Y turning up to the north, that is not a part of this project, it is just the spur. But that Y is something that we.
We need to kind of keep on our financing plan and the R and D track as we move up into our logistics parks.
I think rail is still an important part. As you know, this is, if anybody's gone out there, this is kicked off. This was really what the end of last year, what we spent most of the time was to increase the dollar amounts that flying that rail on this project. This is a major project that will really complete off that whole north west loop and look forward to getting this thing open. I think everything's pretty good to go on this, David, right?
Yes.
Again, forty four million five seventy four, a big project, really one of the largest projects that the zone's ever done. Again, if you're, if you're out there and you drive it, you can really see that it's ready. They've moved everything out of the little trailer park, and you can really see how that's gonna be opened up. In my understanding, that corner lot, just a little FYI, has been closed. I think QT bought it, it's for a gas station. So we knew it would have gone under contract, but you're gonna see a sizable gas station go on that north corner of this intersection, just for whatever it's worth.
If you remember, we had a bunch of waters.
It will be, it's the right kind of a company to do that, you know, there's a bunch of us that had looked at it, and they got nineteen undocumented tanks on that property. But the only people who would take that would be someone who's gonna go put ten more in. You know, it's, this list of projects were all projects from the last two years that we did to make sure we had enough water in this whole north quadrant. You know, so the twenty four inch transmission main, you guys, that is completed. We will blow this thing off of the list, but again, was a big water project to make sure that we had water for Meta. As you know, the Meta project changed from a big water project to a big electric project. And so that's one of their delays when they changed from the H to the F design. But we, we have done most of the water projects, which has been beneficial for the whole north park that we'll talk about. So we do have ample water to the north. We had a clearly to have our heart section, and that is completed. And so that this one will come off our list. This is the McLean extension with a pump station on it. If you'll remember on this one, this is one that we did put on hold, and we're just gonna wait and release this project when we definitely need some additional water. The note that we put on this one is that the, we got an exception for not having to put in a ground storage tank on that line. And that exception will probably expire, so when the plans are done, we're ready to go. And if we were to push this forward or delay it, I guess, even longer past that exception, then we'll have to have David go back in and ask for the exception. The exception just said, look, we'll let you not put that storage tank in. We'll see how it works, and if it works, then we want to do it, once in short. What it is, again, this is a really important project for that quadrant, but we've got ample water to supply all the projects we've got going up there currently. And so we use these dollars to make sure we could get the overpass on that loop done. Again, another three, the three sixty three transmission line here. You can see it's going along the loop and then ties in over behind H and B. And that is a completed project also, probably the last time you will see that. But again, all these water projects still allow us to take that whole quadrant and make sure we had ample water for the future. This is the wastewater extension. Again, when they went from all water to electric, is a project that we were able to scale back a little. It is completed, but we did pick up some additional dollars because they didn't need that equalization basin where they were gonna store a bunch of water because they needed a ton of water. Again, that was, you know, the last time we'll talk about this, but all of that sewer line has been put in. Meta has ample sewer and water for their project, and all the savings that we were able to save and complete this project is the dollars that we used to make sure we had the money to do the outer loop. That one last little trunk upsizing, there's really two. This one running down Cagli, again, is a project that we need to get done. If you see it, it's just running right down, you know, south of Wildflower and blows through there. And it's a line that I really, again, we've put it on hold, this is some dollars that we had picked up again to make sure that our financing plan balanced. You know, still have some easements that we need, but a project that is complete as far as design, sitting on the shelf, ready to pull the trigger, a fairly simple project. And if we get a real large water user in our industrial and logistics park to the north, it'll be very easy for us to go in here and stick this thing back on a bid list and get completed. Yeah, this is the storage, the elevated storage tank out there, and again, a transmission main. If you're out there, you can see this, you know, seven million dollar. If you you're out there, you can see this, you know, seven million dollar. Again, was one of the last little pieces to that whole north park. Interesting, if you look behind that water tower, just about as far as you can see. EDC has almost contracted everything you can see behind that water tank right now. We're sitting in a situation where we can really move forward on that project, we'll talk about that a little bit. Later, but you can see the importance of everything that we went to this point, water, the elevated storage tank. The outer loop is what is gonna feed, I would say, the next ten to fifteen years of. Economic growth to the north, really one of our primary goals is to make sure we have the jobs, we talked a little bit about this, but. This is really gonna secure, we got behind us on this is site sixty four. Probably one of our prime tracks to the west is the burn track. Both of those are sitting there shovel ready, water sewer and. Everything on the horizon is what we're looking to do, so again. That project is complete, and so really as you move into this north industrial park. We are now making the move to really the land that you see right there, I believe every. Almost everything that you're seeing on this slide is now under contract with either under contract or being closed with EDC. And so our real move this year will be to begin the process of opening this land up, getting them certified tracks as far as water sewer. Access with roads, annexations, the whole, all nine yards to to be able to have a EDC use this property, this is. Is one of the master plans, I I will say that in March, I think. By March or April, we could do a full presentation on the. On where we're heading on this. Covey and KPA have done multiple slides, four or five slides that represent how we can develop this, that green line and the purple. Box was what they were using EDC to try to make a. Application for a large project. I believe that that project has gone away, that green line, and we've adjusted a little bit, and so this project. All of the plans that coming KP had done is are near complete. And we can do a full presentation on this. I believe that I've been asked by Adrian and the EDC to give them a little update, so you on the EDC will see it. We had laid back a little bit on this, this was the hundred and fifty thousand, we. We added some dollars to it so that we could expand the project so that Adrian could use this whole presentation to begin to. To go out with a lot of the individuals that he's got coming to. Temple now, so we've updated, that was a dollar that was updated. This was a land strategy, you you know, it's the the one and the twos, you guys, we've pretty much got our arms around it. I believe number one, everything but a very small piece is under contract and. Number two, I'd say seventy five percent of that is done. Nobody has seen this, but they're in in the next presentations as we look forward to where we're going in this quadrant. I've added a five, changed to four. And you guys haven't seen that, I'm just rambling, but I will tell you that on the land strategy, which is just to making sure that, you know, we're out there and know what we could do, we we've adjusted that, so. Really, number one, we're we are good to go, we're going to get that project started. One of it is, you know, is make sure that we have sewer to that quadrant, and so in the. In the outer loop project, L A O one and L A O two serves this area, if you go out there right now, they're dropping those pipes in the ground as we talk, all the easements are done. And then on the other side of the rail, we will continue to take that. That sewer line up into number one there so that we can serve it with water, I mean sewer, and we got twelve inch water line that runs along the loop that's currently in the ground, they will be extending that all the way over to. Towards I thirty five and completing the loop there. So that's what these are talking about, and this is L A O one, it just flows along the lower. Sewer, I mean, the lower blue, which is that runs down that whole flood plain. Again, that that is. Will be in this project and we have. This is showing the, you know, actual. Easements that Kathy and I have had to do, I mean, every one of these projects has just a ton of. Right of entries and then easement so that we can do it. On every project, just sort of gives just a heads up on how much it takes, every one of those little square boxes are a track of land that we've got to go and. You know, get easements and right of entries on, so on every one of these projects, we won't dwell on. Wrong word, dwell on your reflect on, but you know, every time we have a project, you guys, the amount of right of entries and easements that it takes to get these projects going is one of the hurdles we have and. And so, you know, again, that's what this represents and you'll see others like that as we move along. So again, L A O one, L A O two, the lands bought and we're moving to that whole north. We had that road, that's the white run running down the middle, that's where we had started. We have moved that to the east now to get it off of that. Curve and to actually be able to access some of our properties, so again, in March, April, we'll have a whole presentation on that. We do have and have adjusted our. Our dollars to reflect an eight point one two nine construction and you can see that that is in twenty twenty four, so. That is something that we need to be voting on here fairly quickly, I don't believe you have a contract yet to design. Now that we know that we have the necessary land under contract and can move forward, I would hope we could move. In this next month to get the seven hundred and sixty one thousand dollar design. On this done, the loops released, water and sewer are on their way over to this site. We know what we're gonna do, we have a full master plan which I'll present to you, so it's time for us to release that top line and. And you can see that we have construction dollars and we'll move straight into building old Howard to the north and opening up, I would say, close to. Five hundred acres for EDC to begin to market for us. One of the last little projects that we put on hold was a sewer line that goes from the top, which is the HEB. Down, you know, almost down to the past, it's on industrial parkway. That red line, it's a current sewer line that goes along there, we were gonna blast it, that was for Ocho, Ocho was a huge water user. And so we were gonna get way out in front of them, blast that line before they. Got their plant in there so that we didn't have to be trying to blast that sewer line during their opening, we lost Ocho. For multitude of reasons, we put this on hold, plans are done, simple blast project, if we had a major water user tape, burn track or. I would say the the one or two tracks to the the north that we have bought, we would just. This project's on the shelf, ready to go, be an easy blast project. Blast means you just run the pipe down through the center of what's already there and it burst, I guess I call it blast, it's burst. Morning. Go. Yeah, again, it's on hold, it was just another one of those projects, you know, we took the dollars and used them in 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 places that we needed until our increments. Gets large enough, so again, it's ready to go, simple project. Another project that we will also be making a presentation in March is that we had KPA looking at both the Dozier wastewater on the left, that Temple Belt now right. And a little bit of education for us and also getting. A clear picture on what it would take. For these two facilities, our sewer facilities to. What would it take to be able to take an Ocho or a tower, those were two fairly large projects that had. They were large water users, but also. In the NKF report and and reports that EDC have done, they've gone out there and said, okay, so what is Temple Texas, what are you guys, what should you be targeting? What kind of industry should you have in the Temple Texas? And and we told our executive director and EDC, go out there and target those people, well, they came back and said, your food service, you know, you got HEB, you've got Walmart, you've got PFG. You're on on in the middle of the state, you're on I thirty five, here's who you should be targeting, right? Well, those particular types of. Clients have a huge amount of BOD fats that come into that and BOD when they hit over here, both of these have limited, they we have capacity in both of these as far as water, so you pump a lot of water to both of these plants and. We can put it downstream, sell it to Panda, the bigger problem is all the fats that have to be settled out and and it has become a little bit of a constraint for EDC for the staff to say, how do we do that? So this project was for David to go out there and say, David, we wanna know what it would take for us to be able to hold enough of those fats that are out of water is ten dollars would it take and what are we looking at and so. I believe Tommy will be prepared, we're hoping in March to come in and you guys can learn about this fun project and. How do you take care of that ugly stuff when it goes into here and so. Bob and I just got, had a small presentation on update on this and. You you know. Hate to say this, but it's like listening to Chinese, you know, and they're telling you, you know, these numbers all that much, can you just.
Yes, and they're not.
We're we'd have to stone the presentation down from an engineer's point of view is how do you. Make sure that if an Ocho comes, Bob and I made up a new term, which is Ocho, we have one Ocho or two Ocho, right? And because they're gonna come and talk Chinese to us in March as to what it takes to do that, that's a long deal, you guys, seriously, you could spend. We spent two hours and I walked out thinking, yes, she's, I'm gonna go to another class, so. We're gonna try to make this presentation very simple to you, which is to say, if we had an Ocho come to Temple Texas, can we say yes or no? All right, and what would it take? And if you guys know what an Ocho, it was just a high fat BOD. Project and probably a couple of these projects walk away from Temple Texas because this two facilities cannot. Handle it and it takes such a long time for us to make a decision on how do we take care of it, they go somewhere else, Waco took one of them from us and. Commentary, but we wanted to, we wanted you to know, we wanted to understand, we wanted to educate ourselves on what it would take, that's what that slide represents, we've. We we've done the work, the reclamation planning is just ASR, we're also. Is another part of making sure we have water into the future and and they're educating us on that, so a good part of that project. As we move around the horn, you know, corporate campus really needs to be brought back up, we have seventy five thousand dollars, I believe, we're gonna push ahead. With this master plan, capture that seventy five thousand dollars and revisit the that master plan in. And what we're gonna do, so as a part of the twenty forty, we have a little dollar sitting out there that we're gonna compile all together. To work with KPA and Covey to make the presentation, that's a very large. A track of land out there that is residential and we're going to revisit that and get that done. The crossroad parks, there are multiple projects in here that that we're really going to focus on also in the first quarter, but we always show this one because it represents, we wanted to light that hike and bike trail. And we were just gonna do this bridge and light it. This is a year and a half, almost two years ago, she's maybe three years, we extended the. The scope of work, we wanted to light the bridge, that's all we wanted to do as the zone, but like that bridge, we said we should go bridge to bridge, so we should go from the health plan all the way to the green bridge on twenty three oh five. We spent the money to make sure we knew how to do that, so so that's been completed on the top line, but we have not funded lighting that trail and and believe that. That's one of the many projects in the park we wanna look at. This is a new project that Bob is really pushed and we have presented to the project group, which is. Again, would be worth our time to go through the whole master plan. On the crossroads, which is lighting the fields and and some other future. Projects, we will be bringing this back also in March to have. David go out and determine, I don't know if you know where this track line is, you got the fields to the on the left that are currently completed. That that large piece on the right where the red, the one, two and the three are. Is just packed full of trees and if you go drive that, it's turning into a dump site, you got people who live out in there, it's it's a real problem. You got a lot of kids that we have in this park and all that, and this is one of those areas around town that that where you can go back in there and we get a little bit of. Grocery cart camps and stuff like that, and so what we would like to do is to go in this and take the trees out, that's what we've done around the airport and other tracks that we have. So we're gonna have David come back with a dollar amount for us to go and get rid of all the skeet before it gets out of control, clean this so we can mow it. Also, what we would like to do is you're splitting that property with a road that goes from Prairie View to airport, we're gonna have him go ahead and design that one road that. Would transect that and or dissect it and a parking lot and attempt to do lot one, so if you go out there on lot one, it is fairly low and you could probably. Tier that lot, green area number one, just in a two tier with the dirt you have there. Go surround it with lights and you would have some flag football fields, something that Kevin has really been pushing for, trying to take some of the younger kids off of his current soccer fields. Having a place where the younger baseball teams, the little kids, you know, flag football has become fairly big and it's just. Anybody has kids understands if you go from the fields that they're being. Used a bunch and so for us, we'd like to, we we've helped on this, it's something we take off the back of the city and has become a. Pretty good draw for our community, so we would like to see what it would take to get number one. To do that, we gotta get with David, new projects, say, look, we wanna get rid of the trees, we want you to design that street, we want you to say what it's gonna cost for number one. So that we know what the dollar amount is and and see if there's a way for us in the future to get that done. The fun part about that is it is the beginning of possibly being able to add four, five and six, and so again, you can take. And use it as a rec field now, get it prepared, get yourself some parking, get it open up, the red is being held for retail that is. Park related, that number two up there would be nice, some some sort of a rec for Kevin in the future and so additional fields. Again, this is a long term view, and so again, we just wanna move, help the. Help the parks get some plans, get some dollar amounts and and know exactly what it would take to move that attraction forward. And again, stop me anytime, I mean, if you guys have a question, this is, we were not gonna. If you're out there, this section from Carver to Riverside Trail is now under construction. Been a huge project, we did the right away and design on this zone, city. I think with the help of text dot is finally got this project released and so. Under construction today is that section from the north, it'll take us to I thirty five, this section that takes us down past Poison Oak. You understand the importance of this one, you saw that they've opened up Poison Oak over to the Charter School off of three seventeen. She's, she, the city has their second phase of Poison Oak, which will attach into this. And so in eighteen months, you're gonna be able to drive down this portion of the outer loop. Where that two subdivisions are, it is split by Poison Oak, Poison Oak take you over to three seventeen and will really make a huge difference as I relieve around twenty three oh five. And so again, that project, both of those projects are are moving right now.
Just to point, when this is completed and the north outer loop is completed, all the outer loop projects will have been completed except for one last segment from here down to I thirty, sorry.
The last project.
Sorry.
We 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 are, we do it right away again and and have done the design on this, again, it's very timely. A little bit of a change, this one's going north and south and we and we've rotated that, so you can see the subdivision on the left. On this, it's the subdivision on the top, right, you can see Poison Oak, so this, that that Poison Oak will be completed, you can see the word in there, it's Poison Oak. The right away is already there and the design is done and it is funded and I believe this, Richard, you're probably getting pretty close to releasing that last section. Again, you guys will make the the outer loop, the green line will be completed while tying into. The three seventeen and all David got, you know, the state funding again for this last section. We have approval from the state to do the funding, but when you do that, you've gotta go through the hurdles of getting this thing approved through the state. And so they wanna look at every one of those lines ten. And so they want to look at every one of those lines ten different times, ten different ways, make sure that we don't hurt a frog or take over something. Uh there was some old dairy that was on one, a red pathway. Uh back in the eighteen hundreds, you can't see any of it, it's not there, you know, I think that old tower that's sitting there. But it has slowed it down, so we got to make sure that we're not ruining a historical or hysterical site, you know, so. This project is the moving.
Are all three of those lines being proposed or is it an A, B or C option?
All of those were proposed, I think you're in the red line, right?
No. So we had the green under established, uh that's that's the line that we've had for a very, very long time. Um we had that more or less complete through text dot, recently. The project's under construction now, plus the connection I thirty five was all one environmental assessment. And we had to split it because the green line at a federal level, they found on the uh. Whatever whatever direction you want to call it, south side of B N, uh there was an old dairy. And that created problems. The blue line coming across thirty five is where there's uh an ancient popper's grave graveyard. So that's an issue and of course, the red becomes an issue for many reasons. Uh anyway, we had the green established, ready to go. And there are about three things from the uh historical element at the federal level that drew up some roadblocks. And so now they're making us go back through all three alignments and do enhanced environmental assessments for all three. So that has put a a little bit of a of a roadblock unintended for for that that section.
Good news is, is that I thirty five, uh you know, they're working now to take I fourteen from Belton. This is the only section of I thirty five that has not been upgraded and has been released through text dot uh for I fourteen. And so we're still out in front of them and I believe that's also why they're looking at this, because they will make that intersection across I thirty five for us. Which is why we tried to get way out in some of that, like you did to the north. Is that when we have our plans done and they know we have our plans done, they will supply the intersection like they did out there um to the north.
Murder.
Murder, murder. And so the 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 good part is, I believe that's also why they're taking a look at this, because they wrapped it all into their uh I fourteen connection from Belton to our loop. And that's the only section of I thirty five that hadn't been completed. And I I I think one of the reasons.
So we've got the road going up.
Yeah.
And then is there a route that's cheaper?
Yeah, certainly the green.
Don't you think green will still end up being the one you just, they're gonna make you go through all the hurdles?
Yeah, we had the green done and they were really, I mean, there were two things that they got hung up on. One is, you know, if y'all driven Charter Oak, you've seen it, there's there's a. An old structure you drive underneath on Charter Oak, which was an old bridge, which we don't touch at all. Uh they were confused on that, we explained, you know, that's outside of our proposed construction and the right of way that we're acquiring. The one that really got hung up is on the other side of the B N was a historic dairy. Um we offered to expand the bridge so that we didn't touch the dairy, it would just be an elevated structure over it. Um but apparently in the eighteen hundreds, there wasn't shade over the dairy, so that was an issue.
There wasn't shade?
Shade.
She's uh from the sun, the sun was was able to hit the ground. And if a bridge was there, that would not be possible.
That's crazy.
There are no trees there.
It's also what happens when you go get state. We we would fund this with.
The dairy itself is not a historic landmark or anything.
It is in their mind.
Project without federal funding.
You can design a see-through bridge.
We're working on.
So I know we don't, I don't want to get bogged down on this, but have we already bought right away all the way down to green?
No. Uh that, when you look at this, see the pending design completion, environmental assessment right away, we put all that money, we captured it and and you know, sort of put it in half.
Yeah, but we did, we haven't bought anything on that green.
We're waiting for it to be completed.
Some have been acquired out there.
Yeah. Like we bought all the right away and we're completed and 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 would completely completed our design, we probably wouldn't have got it hung up at the state. That's what we've done to the north, but it's worthwhile to use state funds, you know, so we're we're good to go. Poison Oak's not done, you know, the green line's under construction. We we got that forty five million dollar uh section to the north, because we had to fly the um railroad. Well, here, yeah, we got all kinds of stuff, if you look on this map, you're flying the blue line, so you got a bridge, you're flying the B N S F again. This is very expensive, what what do you think construction would be on this piece?
If if we go green, I think at this point, you're you're backing that thirty million dollars.
And so it it'd be really, it's worth the uh community's time to work and help and use state funds on this. So that we're, you know, not spending another forty million dollars.
You know, when do you think you'll have an answer on this? Is it a six month? No, no. Wait, so we we are, we're just about to bring the new enhanced environmental.
Yeah.
Upfront and Kathy, I apologize, it's probably six hundred rights of entry, we have to have boots on the ground on every one of those alignments all the way.
So you're talking several years.
Yeah, yeah, I mean, it's probably gonna take a year just to get all the rights of entry so that we can put people on the ground. I mean, we've got to go shovel test the entire alignment the whole way, we've got to walk everything, we've got to look for it. Uh so so legitimately, in the first one, in green, before we we got rid of it, all of our trenches, we had to put a toad ramp in. So that while we were putting hype in the ground, water, wastewater, there was a ramp for the toads to hop out of the trench. And there is, I mean, anybody, I mean, anybody in here has ever seen construct, that's, you can't do that.
T C U would appreciate.
But you can buy it, you can Google, you can go Google toad ramp and they sell it, they're not expensive.
So, you know. It's worth, it's worth it. You know, one of the things to to reflect on this little piece, uh this will be the last piece that will take the whole west outer loop from I thirty five to I thirty five completed. It I've been on the zone for twenty years, we started this project twenty years ago and it'll be another six until we're done. So you're talking about a generational project, right? We have the east loop that we look at in here and what we attempt to do in those east loop is a little line on piece of paper. What's it gonna do? Most of us in this room will either be dead or gone when we start working on that east loop. You have to start, you've got to look at it and and it it raises lots of eyebrows, a lot of people get, you know, peeved. But if if you'll remember that we had Son to come in and talk to us and they said, you guys are gonna be a hundred sixty five, two hundred thousand, right? Uh we would be completely irresponsible as a community, as a city, but can that's not gonna come? It's coming, we're gonna have two hundred thousand people in our community in twenty five years, that east loop is gonna have to be built. And so as planners and as a community, you kind of lie, lay down a line and try to figure out, how are we gonna move people around? Otherwise, you wake up in Austin where you're buying land at fifty and sixty dollars a square foot for the roadways and 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 the traffic is there. And so this, this is the ending of a twenty six year project and that's what really what you are going to reflect on is is how long it has taken us to do this. And you know, as we move forward, right? We're beginning to say, okay, we've got our west loop completed, what does it look like on the east loop? And and again, this will raise eyebrows, people are like, you know, don't put a line through my property and understand that, I mean, I understand that. It's it's it it, but you know, most of these red lines, you know, we're twenty five, thirty years before uh these will uh come to fruitation. So you just attempt to to know where you could put your line on the ground. So that when we have two hundred thousand people here, that we don't have a huge traffic jam. And so that's what this east line is, when we've looked at this, you guys, uh you know, we're not buying land, we're not doing anything, we're just saying where, how are we gonna connect this? Most of these lines, we begin to look at what the 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 tape, you know, Kate Kettle has done with with the the mayor who's on that. They go out there and they look at this and and it's on their list, it's on ours, we try to marry it. And you know, David's thrown it and just to take a look at it, can you do this? How many times are you gonna have to, every one of those dark lines is water, so every one of those is a bridge and you, you know, anyway, not to dwell on it, but. You 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 know, the west loop will be completed here in the next six years and it is a twenty six, thirty year project, this is another thirty year project. Then, you know, Kathy's gonna help us get the right of entries and all of us will be retired and gone before we really ever start figuring out what we're gonna do over there. Anyway, that that's a the small dialogue on the whole loops that we have tried to um get out in front and help um.
Hey, John.
Yes.
What do you mean, Bob? Can you real quickly briefly describe where each of those three options of the outer loop coming into the interstate, about where those are?
The green one, if you look at that, that's Montana, right?
Okay.
You know where Montana's is? That's the most important one, because that's the one we're gonna concentrate on. If you look at the black line right next to it, you know, that's that little professional drive where text dots uh licenses, right? You guys, I believe, so between the green and the blue is where that 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 area right in there is where where you get your license bureau for Texas. When you take the red line, it's too close to the B N S F and I thirty five, so David, you know, they want you to look at all your options. But when as you move towards the red, you can see that we're getting closer to to where, you know, almost have to have a single bridge, you know, never even land on the ground. And so where you take the blue line, look what it's running down, middle of a flood plain, all right? I mean, what the hell, Richard, you'd love to build that. Right, and so the the complicated parts of that is that we picked the right spot and we shouldn't spend the time we are that we even now today, this morning, on that green line. It's that simple, that's where it needs to be. We're gonna have to go through the whole state hurdles to get it done, it'll go right, right towards Montana, it's every time I drive that, I just look over to Montana, look over there and say, yeah, this is gonna be an intersection in ten years. Up in a big, probably one of the most last pieces to West Temple, that's one of your largest growth areas right now, is to getting traffic to I thirty five. Right now, the only way you can get to I thirty five right now is either down twenty three oh five onto their current loop. Or running down the middle of Belton, I don't know if you guys have done that lately, but that's just insane. I mean, you can spend forty five minutes to get from uh twenty three oh five to I thirty five. When you're, when you're out west, you know, for people who live out west, if you drive here, how are you gonna get down to Austin? You know, until we get this thing done, it's, you can't, it it's just a a mess and so that's the importance of it. Uh you know, Synergy Park, this is another presentation that we will continue to grow. Uh you know, the colors there, you guys, are lands that we have bought. You know, David constantly, this this thing is a moving target uh. Dialogue, you guys, and everybody signs, it takes some time, but we have pushed past our twenty nineteen water sewer master plan. So every time you come to David and you ask, you know, hey, how do I get water and sewage here? You know, his master plan hits halfway into this, right? We had brought that stuff over to Bob White and so, you you know, as you know, with the water on this map is moving from left to right, right? The green, that's, those are flood plains, is heading to the coast, right? So if you just think about that, it means that's where your sewer's going. And so half of this slide is in his twenty nineteen master plan, the other half is not. And so we tell David, David, what's it gonna take me to take one of those little yellow squares over there, put sewer to it? And he does what an engineer does, say, hey, I can do it for seven hundred thousand, right? That's what we did in our last plan, I'm I'm gonna rather than spend a lot of time on this, I'm just gonna tell you what these, what this needs. And so he gave me that number seven hundred because I asked him the question, hey, what's it gonna take to do that little yellow square, right? Well, then I, you know, Bob and I were talking, hey, you know, we're buying the stuff over here and you got E D C and hey, we need this, the ten acres over here. And I said, David, well, that's really good, because you know, you got my sewer to that little yellow square, he goes, yeah, I can get the next yellow square, right? And it's because he said, I'm like, well, well, look, big long story short, we we are really looking at this quadrant. To making sure that as we expand ourselves over to Bob White, we will be able to sewer and supply water. And we got little pieces parts, every time we meet with him, it changes a little bit. Uh this is, this is in our financing plan, you guys, we we gotta pay um green data for what they have done out there. So again, those are dollars that will be taken out of our uh funds, right? But as we are working on that whole quadrant, we need to get water to the southeast. We we adopted as a as a zone to help the um Richard and and Public Works to accelerate their planning process. Of getting water from the left hand side, which is our water plant, which we have currently upgraded as a community to where we can make a bunch of good drinking water. Problem is that water is sitting over there on number one, on the membrane plant, and we need it over here in number five, right? And to get that water from number one over to five, you gotta put that green line in and some of them pink lines. Which was a fifteen year project on the financing plan. Uh once we realized that this community was gonna grow at the rate that it is, uh that we've hit the uh the borders everywhere as far as water and sewer. We, as a zone, adopted getting those design plans done and moving these projects forward. Um and we're gonna continue to do it, it is one of those projects that uh you you it will take, if you look at all those pink lines, that green line feeds all those pink lines. Dave, correct me if I'm wrong, but it's in in basic layman's turn, we need that green line to fill the pink lines. Those pink lines are not all for economic growth as far as us and synergy, it is for that whole quadrant. But for us, it it makes sense that anytime the zone can take some dollars out of the budget that the the mayor and. This walker had to do and we take it on, frees them up to do other projects. And so later on, we're gonna talk about that, the zone has not only taken an increment in in done projects that are specific to increment. We we've also captured a lot of projects that take a huge amount of money out of a C P I, or you know, capital improvement projects. It it helps us to accelerate uh uh an ability to expand our population, because it's coming no matter what. Uh two years ago, uh we made this presentation to the E D C and said, we're gonna do that. And Jim had asked, well, how quickly, the mayor, should say, not Jim, and asked, how quickly can you do this? And and we had said, hey, pretty quickly. So we did it really quickly, right, to get that green line and all that and we funded it and these are all individual, real important piece. Uh short term, that's a short term sixteen inch tower, you go over there, takes us to making sure that we, you know, it's all downhill again, everything's going from right, you know, left to right. You take that water, push it into the rain, helps us so that we can get some projects, that's very important for the zone, that piece, right? That one helps us get Synergy Park water, right? And and that that's getting, you know, ready to go. These other projects, this is, these are all like thirty six inch big old transmission lines, little black circles or pump stations. You take water from one section, you gotta keep pumping it to the, you know, over to the other side. Uh this, uh if this project, which he has has begun to do design work on, which we are paying, you can see at the top side, six hundred and thirty three thousand dollars, right? Uh the bottom side is the construction, you guys, ten million dollars, we as a zone, so like, we would really like to help community get water over there, take this off of the the back of uh. Your capital improvement projects, our bigger problem, and this is not a rock, Kathy, but you know, we talked about that one little map out there that we showed that, you know, for L E O one. And how many things you gotta do to get uh that project going. Jim, you asked me a question in that meeting two years ago, John, can you guys get this done? I said, we can do the top line, six hundred thousand, you know, that's quickly, we did it, the design is going. The second line, hey, man, we can put a a number on twenty twenty seven, ten million, right? We can do that, that's really easy, go to the bottom, right of entry, for David to even begin to design, he's gotta have a right of entry, you know what that means? He can't get boots on the ground, he can't go out there and figure out how to design that exactly without getting his little two feet and guys up there with a stick saying, hey, what's the fail here, right? Fifty nine of them was what we need, guess how many we have? Then it looks like zero, that's right of entries, that has nothing to do with buying the right way, right? On one project. And so for us, we have accelerated that, this is, it continued answering questions, you, you you know, hey, can you guys do that? Yeah, we can do one, we can do the middle, but that that middle part, that is, it's not a rock, I'm not telling rocks, it's hard, you know, it's hard to go. To to uh get fifty nine people, say, can I get on your property, how are you gonna do that? That's just so we can design it so that we can come back and say, hey, we'd like to buy that property. And so for us to get this water line, we as as its own, as a community, Richard always is calling, we don't want to lose Richard, and Richard's wanting to leave us, but. You know, you you understand, I mean, he knows this, what it takes and and we need water to that southeast quadrant, we gotta get this done. This is all commentary, it's pretty fun, this is a little piece, it is fun stuff, you guys, this this little piece right now that we're, you know, we can do dry lines, we can, that that's the railroad track. Uh we broke off A and B, A and B was taking it from. A and B, A and B was taking it from the water plant over to Lorraine Drive, but we made an A and B and a C, the C is gonna be pretty easy. Uh, and and C is really important because of the fact that we need to to get the hike and bike trail, we got grant funding, so we broke this thing off so that we can get that water in the ground, so that we can go spend uh, three million dollars on a hike and bike trail, and and it's real important, again, I always talk about it, but it's really nice that you put the water line in first, so that when you build three million dollar hike and bike trail on it, we don't go out and jerk it off, right? Take it out, and that's, that's what we are doing on that project um. Uh, you know, again, we we've got, we got a bunch of these lines, you guys, it's just water. Needed one right of entry way, that's pretty easy, one thing, we've got it. Again, this is the B section, right? It's taking it from history over to Lorraine. So each one of these is just, you know, look at twenty-three, zero, y- you know, we funded seven hundred thousand dollars, the zone has taken, you know, folks, as you can see, a million and three out of the system, off of the back of your capital improvements, put it onto the zone to accelerate these projects, so that, you know, we can get some public works to to move this thing forward, and uh, we had twelve million project, twelve million dollar project, ten million dollars, twenty-two million dollars to get water over there. Really, we're not doing anything till we get right of entries. This is that C portion that is um being um bid. Uh, one of the interesting, I I will make mention that in March or April, we're gonna have to come back in, in changing from the A to B. Uh, if you remember January of last year, we broke out uh the A and B and added this C line. And we didn't change the uh OPC, the OPC that was given from David to um Brandon to everybody was six point four, and you guys, we stuck with the old number. And so on our financing plan right now, it's five point six eight five, we need to go to six point four. It really isn't going to adjust the project too much, but I did wanna let you know that that did not get done. Uh, mainly, uh, what had happened, uh, the the difference in those two numbers is uh, that project is going by Deerfields and then to couple subdivisions to the north of that, which uh again, Richard gets a lot of calls from those people, and he's been to a bunch of HOA meetings, because as we run down that railway, you're gonna be taking trees out, takes you a fifty-foot width with that water line in, and so we added a bunch of trees, so that we can do tree mitigation on there. So they only demonstrate in the five, six, eighty-five, and the six point four is money for tree mitigation, which will be done in about twelve months, and so
It needs to be six point.
Six point four.
In twenty-four.
Yeah.
We we should be able to do that.
And and I don't think we'll be putting trees in twenty-four. But I might, but we should, but you know, as you know, with the project being released, we wanted to get there.
Yes, we break it into those.
So you you're gonna see that coming um. Again, Lorraine Drive, that that is just all you guys to feed. For us, the zone, that we have a bunch of land here that is gonna become a very important park. We got about one MGD out there, we need about another three. We need that bean transmission line over there in our lifetime, so that that whole corridor is gonna grow. In Temple, Texas, when we begin this twenty forty master plan, there are two areas that we were gonna expand to. You've already seen that in in our master plans in the northwest, we've bought you know, goes to six hundred acres, we got water, we got sewer, we got an outer loop, we're ready to go. The other portion that you can see in our community right now is this southeast quadrant, is the growth corridor. It's I fourteen, heading north to Houston, you got ninety-five heading down to Taylor, it's gonna be your fastest growing area. If we don't get together and get ourselves prepared for that in the next ten years, what we will get run over, and you'll have just a bunch of mugs out there, and you won't be able to expand, so that's that water on that. Sewer is halfway decent over there, David is working on that. Uh, we are expanding the boundaries, and we will probably help push um the the council and Public Works to updating their twenty nineteen master plan, cuz if you look at their twenty nineteen water and sewer master plan, well, we hit the boundaries, and we've gotta push ourselves outside that. Again, these are just all the projects that are over, that's that's the one little line, that's my little red red square. That was the seven hundred thousand dollar deal, right? Seven, six hundred fifty to do that yellow square. Talked to David a little bit more, and he's like, man, I'm on the border of this old master plan from twenty nineteen, I'd really like to tell you to take a look at this, because spending six hundred is one number, but in real terms, we're probably closer to one point five, two million dollars to expand it, so that all the land we're buying, we can do. In short, so this is a project that you will con- constantly see us talk about a little bit. That he gave us the Band-Aid, and instead of the Band-Aid, we want to fix, so that we can make sure that we're we're fixing that whole project out there and have enough sewer, that's what this represents, you guys, we gotta get outside that. You take that little city line, that little uh black line, it has now moved out off of this sheet of paper. And so when they did this in twenty nineteen, it was an update from the twenty fifteen. The twenty fifteen, you guys, we've had a bunch of people moving in our community, don't need to ramble on this, but what's happened is we're off of this sheet, and so David has got to really update that, so that when I asked him the question, how am I gonna get water? And sewer to a track land that we just got done buying, he doesn't say, here's the Band-Aid, here's the real fix, that's where we're heading with this slide. Any thoughts? That's why you're gonna see these numbers, they constantly change a little bit, because our scope of work changes as we move forward. Alright, downtown, uh, again, uh, some great projects we've done, you know, downtown city center um, is really been, we all know what's going downtown, um, it's it's exploding, that's really good. So we have this project, which is, you know, under construction, waiting for Turner Behringer to lower their scaffolding. I don't know, has anybody ever heard from them? Are they gonna lower that scaffolding someday soon?
We've met with them uh about two weeks ago, and they thought they would have it done in four weeks. Uh, we got another meeting in another two weeks, so we'll give them their update. I don't think that four weeks is is probably gonna happen. And of course, we got professional building across the street too that we need, cuz we have to go building face to building face and redo everything in order to meet ADA requirements in our pedestrian facilities.
We released this project, sort of knowing, you know, I talked to Bo, I love talking. I won't pick on you, but you know, Bo's got a restaurant down there, and two years ago, I said, yeah, Bo, geez, you know, I don't know if that, you know, but that road's gonna be done, you know, it's the Turner Behringer's doing a hell of a job, you guys. I mean, really, it's gonna be a first-class deal when they get done. But man, it's a four-year project, it was, you know, that scaffolding was gonna be down eighteen months ago. Right? It's still up. We released the project. Uh, you gotta wrestle down there, doing a little piece over here, doing a little piece over there, trying to get this thing done. We can't finish this project till that scaffolding is down. Scaffolding don't come down until they've reached that certain point, and so great project, can't wait till the scaffolding comes down, because then we will blow out the rest of this downtown city center and tie ourselves to that beautiful garage. And you can see that we've done everything on Sixth Street, is that Sixth? Yeah. And Fourth, you know, that Fourth intersection, he's sort of got pieces, parts all going, and we're moving ourselves all the way over to Second Street, alright, Second, Fourth and Sixth, and in that downtown city center, but as you look at this, we can't do anything till that scaffolding's done. And so he's just doing pieces, parts, and it makes the project look like it's long and old, it really isn't, we're just doing what we can.
John, can I ask, um, what is the reasoning with the scaffolding? Did they share that with you? And I've heard historical tax credits, I've heard that.
Yeah, we've heard historical tax credits, access, you know, to those top floors, but they they didn't, they didn't go into great detail.
I guess that's that a lot, so.
It's a, you 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 know, sometimes it's the best way, they, you know, you look at that whole project, you know, I think it's changed a little bit, um, ownerships to, who's in charge to all kinds of things in this project, I believe. Those windows, uh, in in the hysterical um documents, they had to keep them. Alright, and so I don't think they were able to pull them out, or the architecture, and they'll get the the credit, and so I think they had to rebuild everyone else's windows, and had to save a piece of glass, and probably have a toad that lives up there, and that's gotta be a toad that goes to the top. In real terms, that kind of a project is very complex, right? And and it's complex, and the the costs have gone up on everybody. You you look at these projects that are happening. All of these projects, you guys, that we're talking about, we were meeting with masks on. If you guys don't remember during COVID, and just these things released, and we're still sitting here, you know, four years later, trying to finish them, and so if you started a project in twenty nineteen and funded it and got your bid in twenty nineteen, and you're finishing in twenty twenty-four, it ain't pretty. And and it it it, you know, doubled costs, right? Steve, all of us that are have done that, we have uh rebalanced the uh Richard and I were just talking about that, there are projects that are vision right now, you guys, that have begun to see a little bit of a a a drop off in in the cost, but your twenty nineteen, twenty uh twenty-four were were some tough years, and these are the projects that will finish, and were the ones that we started. This got off.
Those tax credits are huge, and basically providing the equity for the deal, I mean, they're millions of dollars.
I think it slowed the project by about eighteen months.
Yeah. We're gonna build these lights someday. This is the project, you know, you gotta, you have to dwell, dwell on these, and and we took this time, I appreciate you guys, Steve, cuz you know, we're only gonna do this one time. This is a five-year-old project. O- one day, um what is it, Leadership Temple came in and said, here's what we've decided to do for our project, we wanna light downtown, and we got forty thousand dollars. Right? And so they came to this group, you know, we are looking at it, we're like, okay, you know, first of all, forty thousand dollars won't even get you into the door. And do you know how hard it's gonna be to light downtown? It's it's a great project, you guys, if you look the lights that we've got on Santa Fe and on TISD building, uh, when we get this project done, uh, it'll be great. The purple are signed easements, that Kathy is working in her spare time, I'm trying to get these people to say, can we please put a light on top of your property? It takes easements, you gotta get power, you gotta do that. Uh, eventually, in our lifetime, we will get those purple squares lit up. In downtown, it will continue its restoration uh and become a very nice place to come and visit. It's a project that we adopted, it stays on our our little slide here, it's, you know, what, twenty-eight thousand dollars? It's completed for our four hundred and fourteen thousand dollars, and I asked David, like, you know, this is nice, you got received forty-three, we needed sixty-one or eighteen out there. You know, a couple of eighteen have come in, I think we're just about to walk away from it and just do what we can do. And I keep asking David, that four hundred and fourteen, that four hundred and fourteen thousand dollar number is at least seven years old. Uh, you know, who knows if we can still do it for that.
So far, we're still good.
Just amazes me that 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 you.
This is one, um, we put on hold at the end of last year, we got a group of people together to identify of people who had contacts with those lingering ones, with the hope that we could bring them into the fold. And then when we realized that we weren't going to meet the company's deadline for getting everything lit up by Christmas, we put it on hold until March, which is, it seemed like a long time at the time, but now it's right around the corner, so we will make our final push in the spring, and then what we have, we have. And then if everyone is okay, we're still whiting it, understanding it's not going to look like Santa Fe, it it will be patchy.
Yeah.
And as long as everyone is okay with that and understands that, then we will.
You you can see some of the big corridors, you guys are gonna look good. Yeah, I still believe, and I told Andy this, and haven't really helped her as much, I I had gotten with uh Louie, and I really think that they could possibly do it, but I think Tony would do it too, that's the big, you know, tech sell. I mean, the dude's, he's a friend, I think he's concerned, because as you know, he's moving out west, and he gonna sell that building, and he's concerned about signing something to that that will uh hamper his being able to sell that building, and so I I think it will actually enhance it, and so I think we'll go run it in one more time. It's real important, you guys, this is important to make downtown look good, uh, it's it's, it gets old, it makes us all look like we're not doing our jobs, but you know what, we adopted a temple leadership project, and it's it's a booger, that's what it is, you know?
What's the reason that they're saying no?
Huh?
What's the reason they're saying no, or having hesitations?
I don't know, we're sending you out there. It's pretty easy to beat up like Andy when you're looking.
Owner of one of those buildings has changed.
Yeah, it does, it changes. I talked to one of them, I talked to a person, I talked to the person, say, you don't really wanna do this, and he go, but I got this track of land on the other side of town that I've been working on trying to get done, I said, what? This building, giving us, but I wouldn't do that unless you fix this other thing. It's like my cousin's sister's brother uh, you pissed off five years. Seriously, I mean, I I, you know, Kathy does this every day, I know it's right of entries. It's real simple, we're gonna try to go and put a sewer line there, but you 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 know, well, I gotta talk to my brother's cousin and sister to get it's, you got ninety, we got a hundred of them out there. We have got to help staff and our engineer and Kathy to figure out a way to take fifty-nine right of entries and get it done in six months, it's impossible. But my opinion i- i- is pretty easy, we gotta figure it out, we gotta figure out how to get these things done. Otherwise, we won't have water, we won't have lights, and it's a, it's unbelievable what it takes to get somebody to sign a document. Parking garage is done, this is a great-looking little project, it's done, um amazing, that, you know, that, there's, there's all kinds of uh skeletons buried under that thing to get this completed, really, you know, it it was real hard for Exaco to get that done, and their bank is looking good. I mean, it's, that's a good project done, right? This one's, you you know, done, ready to go, we just gotta finish that, um. This is a, you know, this is a fun one, we Avenue C, you know, we've worked on it, uh below this, what's important is, is you can see is that community um market, which we are going to release. Uh, the two buildings, you know, the old sun glow, and the, you know, for uh Blooming, I guess we no longer have a Blooming Fest, we have beautiful festival fields, and probably gonna have beautiful weather. And then, you know, the one here, you guys, we, you know, we haven't had that Blooming Festival for six years, so the rain, this year we'll cancel it, and it's gonna be ninety degrees and sunny, but we look forward to finishing this whole project, you know, Avenue C pushing all the way to the east. Uh, again, something very much, very much we have. Well, it's just commentary, you guys, it's you know, Avenue C, this is one of those projects, when you think about zone, you know, what are we doing out here east, uh you you know, it's one of those projects that the 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 zone said, hey, this is an important thing to do, let's push this thing east, uh it it was real important for the festival fields, the top slide is festival fields, and getting across MLP, that that was important. So we got some properties that we bought over there that we would, you know, hope to get an annex relocated to and begin the process of we've done really good in the core of downtown, and we felt it was important to to move ourselves north, south, east, west from that core. This is one of the projects that the zone picked up. Uh, again, has a a lot, a lot of uh funding, uh, we, you know, we're, we're gonna push it forward, uh takes a lot of right-of-way, takes a lot of work to buy what you gotta do to, you know, to move uh that project forward. This this is at the end of that project over by the park, and it's almost ready to go, and that's over by Emerson, we bought Emerson, you can do some redevelopment, I know that Aaron and her old staff is working very hard on programming uh housing and redevelopment for east, um you know, both in the Ferguson Park neighborhood and in the Crestview parking uh or neighborhood plan, so, you know, that that is this project, we've sort of backed off of this project right now, that's Henderson, that is in the Crestview neighborhood, we believe in in pushing this, uh, I think there was some movement on on changing some of the right-of-way, we uh we as a zone, we're thinking that little blue line is the drainage, and if you drive that, each one of those little connections are dead ends. Uh, we felt that really important to get rid of those dead ends, create a really nice corridor and clean up the using the the drainage as a, I can, you know, uh cleaning that up, and bottom line, and and so, you know, Avenue C, uh, we got the funding, we're moving this is Henderson, and as you can see, we somewhat put some of our dollars on hold on the bottom. Uh, we still are doing uh the top portion and and helping getting the uh construction design and all that moving forward. Uh, pedestrian downtown, you guys, moving our downtown over to T Med. Uh, you know, we got uh Boulevard coming from one direction, I fourteen uh to downtown, and we're going from downtown. And hopefully, in the next ten years, we can connect to and have a total brand-new uh uh connection to it, and all kinds of little projects pop up on these, the little squares on the top and the bottom, can we take these, do little parks, and so uh, we're really good at taking projects and having our scope of work expand as we move, so we come to you with a project, and by the time we do it, we've added three more projects on top of it, because it just makes sense, this is one of them. Alright, we we talked about those two little green squares, we added, you know, you got the TISD doing their whole upgrade of theirs, uh, services, uh, and so we moved ourselves down Avenue E with that project, and and this project, it is actually moving along, um, twenty-five for funding, four point six, uh, that will really get us a hiking bike trail worked again, the, you had to get Encore shut down a street, or we had to shut down a street for Encore, we had to get the state to approve a a lane that is not being used. State to approve a, a lane that is not being used for us, turn it into a bike, bike, they've done all that, so it's moved forward, uh. This is bought, uh, this was the first drawing for our community market, uh, up there against festival fields. Uh, we have moved it forward since then, uh, and I believe these plans are a hundred percent complete. And we were able to find funding to, to do that, so in twenty twenty four, I believe, when will, when will we bid this?
We're about to turn it out, we've gone through development review, just got comments back on that, they're pretty minor, uh, so we'll address those and then we'll be able to bid, bid project.
Again, another great asset for downtown, you guys, when this is completed. And, and so we got that funded, this is, uh, this just represents, uh, again, another pretty picture from. Cubby, I think, you know, Commissioner Schuman just loves this one, cause we showed him these drawings and it really is what he's gonna build. Reminded us every time we popped this up, I really liked the sign where you quit using it, but. We, we asked Cubby, you know, we gotta track land over there, could, will anything fit on it and he's done this drawing. Um, the most important part of this is that we are buying the annex, they did allow us to, to. Uh, the county to push that one year and so over a three year period, we'll be paying two million dollars. So, to buy, uh, that annex and they will take it and the commissioner for will design their own buildings, uh, and. I'm just gonna rub this in, Bill, just so I know how long you're gonna be here, but we'll just keep bringing this one up, cause I know that every time you see it, it makes you pretty, pretty happy.
You're just waiting till I've gone.
I don't believe we will have a whole lot of control over what they're building, we just had Cubby draw some, said, look at. What would fit on there, so I, I love saying that, I, I've never really. And next time, I'm taking home, taking home two hours of, of my time here, Avenue A. You, you guys, uh, Second Street, Main Street, Fourth Street. Uh, we, we've gotta get that designed, as you know, if we're gonna do any one of those sections, you need to look at it holistically. Um, and so to complete out that Avenue A corridor, get all them streets built in the downtown. Uh, is a fairly large project, uh, you, is this, do you have the contract on this?
Yeah, we've had, we have the contract, uh, we're, we finished up Geotech last week, we took advantage of Extra Co, having their. Road closure and for their facility and got our boards done on it, survey, uh, is done and about to be sent to us, we've droned it. We've already started preliminary, it is moving forward as fast as we can move forward.
Now we'll take care of the Great Lake.
This right here, Great Lake of Cheese? That's how I'm praying, yeah, but it's just, just, you know, to reflect on these drawings. But what, what we end up having to do, this is the Extra Co corner, right? And so you can see that on the Extra Co side, you're, you're going to a parallel parking rather than angled. And so, we, we haven't told people that yet, I mean, that's always fun for, for the mayor, cause you know, we get ready to draw it and we say, yeah, you know, about seventeen. Parking spaces, you're gonna have six, you know, at a time, but we built two grounds, so that at least you're, hopefully you're helping with it, we've replaced your spots, but.
Now I have to walk thirty feet.
Yeah, yeah. It does do that, but this whole plan, you can see that on, on the, uh, west side is where we, on each one of these, we did it on, uh, first, we're gonna do it on main, we're gonna do it on second. Uh, doesn't look like we're doing in front of you, Bo, but it, you know, you're trying to determine on each one, where do you drive your, um. Pedestrian, you know, rather than having them on both sides, you, you get a good hiking bike trail. And so there's a lot of work to, to do a pretty slide like this and say, here's what we're gonna do. Each one of those segments is a million five, you guys, we talked about that, so if we were gonna do Main Street and that intersection, that's a million five, Second. Street and the intersection, million five, and so every one of those, that's a six million dollar, uh, six to ten million dollar slide. And, and, and this is one of those deals that most likely won't add anybody new, we're rebuilding our downtown with zone dollars that. You, you know, there's times that you ask and, and council ask and members have asked me and others like. What, what's your increment, what, why did you go downtown, Ted Funker would still be pissed at me, excuse my language, cause he said, here says. You know, if you guys start building downtown, you'll never end, seriously, I sat in this room and he said, what are you doing, you're opening up downtown? But you know, as we get to the end of these slides, you guys, there are times that this zone has gone out here and we've realized if. We're gonna get people to move into Temple, Texas, right, it isn't all about owning a thousand acres in our northwest part, so that we can have two hundred. Uh, employee in, in, and tell Adrian, thank you so much for bringing those people in. Because the reason they wanna move to Temple, Texas is because Temple, Texas is the place that their employees wanna work. So our focus changed that we took a lot of projects that were city projects. And took them on as the zone and with a huge amount of money, uh, of our increment, because we realized that it's gonna make E D C's job easier. That if we make this a place that they want to live, then it would be better. And, and I'm crescendoing to the fact that with the end of this slideshow, twenty twenty forty, we've gotta look at that and say, what do we look like in twenty forty? So what, what, what you all have to do and what my, um, our whole team is gonna do, is we're gonna look at each one of these projects complete and say, okay, we're complete. You know, what does the next group look like and then what does it look like after that and how can we? Draw lines on a piece of paper and begin the process of saying, how do we spend money in twenty fourteen, right? And so that, that, I need, I'm taking you on this trip because we gotta get past these to get to the next ones. This is something that I wanted to make sure, um, Tyler, that as we look at that, we've taken those buildings down. Right? And we, we need to not have dirt, and so I don't know if we've got, uh, irrigation and. And so, we, we need, uh, David, for you to get a number for us to. Get some black soil, uh, irrigate that, uh, it, it is, uh, our main gateway, that's why we took all those buildings down, we. You can see that the last pieces of concrete have been hauled off, we need to make this look really good, it is, you know, the highest best use of this is gonna be something really nice in the future. Uh, it could be two years before that comes along and we don't need a mud field and so. This is something we're gonna come back with here in the next, uh, meeting and find out what it would take for us to get that done. Uh, again, that's something that the chairman rides, uh, a lot of people about, uh, some of the Bob is constantly, anytime we take something down, he wants it finished. Through a irrigated in grass and it, it is something that, that he picked up when he was chairman. Seven years ago and I think is gonna ride us again, so. Uh, what do we got, the Veterans Boulevard, this is a project that's been, I think fifteen years old, right? And it's still got the same, uh, what I would call constraint, this is a tough project, you guys, it just continues to be tough and. Will continue, when we finally build this, you know, I hope I'm, I'm still around. Um, it needs to happen, uh, we did First Street, you know, we got us up, I mean, we got us up to the. End of this slide, we need to pick this up and push ourselves over. It's an eight, you know, it started as a six million dollar project, moved to a ten million dollar project, moved to an eighteen million dollar project and it's finally a twenty million dollar project. It just keeps on, it's the gift that keeps on giving, the major problem with this project is water. Uh, we hate to go out and spend, uh, fifteen million dollars on a project that doesn't work. And so to make this project work, you have got to fix the water, to fix the water that is coming off of the V A, coming down. To where that green line stops, it, it runs through all those apartments and if you're over there, they're awful, right? David is now currently working on trying to figure out how can he keep the water inside this green line, right? Which, uh, that's what he's working on now, how do I take all the water off of the V A, off of Temple College, off of Veterans? Stick it in underground, release it inside of this green line and not have additional flooding in those apartments that are currently. And so in short, that's what he's working on, is how do I do that? And there are issues and we're gonna continue to work on it, we adjusted our ten dollar, ten thousand, ten million dollar number. We weighted it over to David, say, David, go over there in twenty twenty four with six point seven and figure out how to take care of that water, so then in twenty twenty seven. We can come back and start the process of building Veterans Boulevard, that's what that slide says. This is pretty much done, it, it's, uh, uh, working with T I S D again, this is all city property, uh, but is, as a joint use with, uh. Travis Middle School and they have big drainage problems, so really what you got on there is everything to the left, you see, it looks like a road, that's actually a concrete ditch. Right now, it's sort of snakes its way through this whole property and, and as a, a piece of this, uh, bond, we, the zone gave dollars to. T I S D to fix a city park so that they could, uh, fix their field and make this actually functional, which it is not right now. That's what that slide says.
And that big ditch flows into the water project.
And when you put nice concrete like this, you know what it does, it increases the speed, so. You know, that changes your C coefficient or whatever, if it gets that water down there even quicker and gets those apartments at a better rate, and so what's happened in this whole. Uh, drainage, uh, old Brownsfield, nobody took any consideration what they're gonna do with their water. It, it all hits three sixty three right now, actually, it just keeps on going, once you're done, we'll cease. You get under three sixty three, you're heading all the way down Fire Street, it's down there at ninety three and floods all those houses and so. Uh, dog pit is almost fixed, that's out west, you know, we've done multiple big detention ponds out there because we had green fields. I think one of the things that David is looking for in this whole quadrant over there, where can I store some water so that? If you store water in a detention, then you detained it and it doesn't hit that creek and if it doesn't hit the creek, then flood the apartments, right? When you fly this whole area, Bob and I spent a bunch of time on, on Google and said, okay, so where are we gonna put a? A, a detention pond, right, and so every place we looked was a fifteen million dollar square. I mean, how do you, it's brown field, that's what you mean by brown field, this thing's been built out, there's no place for us to put water. To the right of those baseball fields, you guys, is a detention pond, but again, I, it's just history, you guys, and we shouldn't be talking about it, I'm not. There's a detention pond and we were able to get that land donated from Scott and White, it took Bob and I to go sit. Up on the sixth floor and beg those guys, said, look at, the only way Travis can build its school, change its facing and for us to get Wilson Art there. Is we gotta detain some water, will you give us the property and they donated that property to us since Scott and White, it's just really good history. And there's not much more land like that, so it really helped, cause we, that's a big detention pond sits out there and take that water off and it's allowed T I S D to. You know, increase their footprint, um, this is done. And you know, we, we did that helix and, uh, uh, this was half of a joke, you guys, that there is a sign on this, we finished this deal, you know, and that. We didn't really want it to look exactly like, is that what it's called, a helix, you know, it's a chromosome? And so we didn't wanna get slammed down by the, you, you know, the scientists over there, so we made this look like this. Make a long story short, there was a sign on there last week, we took down and said, uh, a cockroach on a French fry. I had to take it down, I drove it myself and, and it said, uh, Art is unknown. So if you drive this thing and you look at it, it, it really looks like a cockroach on a. Anyway, our art's done, sorry, Tom, there you go, F B O is done, right, beautiful building, boy, you, you know. We don't get a lot of opportunity to hear the people that come through this, you know, guys, cause they mostly end up in Adrian's office. But he has told us the number of people that are landing in here, if you talk to Sean. Uh, you know, he, Sean's doing a heck of a job out there and, and you know, the jets that are sitting out there, people are coming into Temple, Texas. To locate here and, and we are changing the quality of place, this has been one of those projects. Really, it's a, you know, changed what we have out there, uh, spending quite a bit of money to make sure this thing was covered, but it will be very enhanced. The, our ability to move, uh, emergency personnel, uh, to the various hospitals that, and not sit down that tarmac in a hundred and five degree weather. And so, eh, a really good process, this business, uh, you look at the master plan, they told us that those three haters that are already out there. Would be done sometime in twenty fifty, right? And so we got those three and we already put four more in, Sean says he's got about three people coming right now, I believe, but not more. And we, it'll be very surprising, you guys, that when you look at the master plan, they didn't think we'd ever fill this, we're gonna fill this and it's gonna take us some time to figure out. Uh, if we're gonna need more, and old picture, it's paved, all looks really good right now, uh, ready to go, project is complete. Uh, by building that F B O and the number of jets we have in, you can see that jet sitting up there in that little square. And, and you can, uh, you guys, you can't really tell, but where that jet is, is not where that cupboard was. So he, uh, he, Sean has lost a bunch of space for him to park all these jets that are coming. So we're gonna have to do that little red square, try to help him, we took some space away from him. I thought he was, you know, a little, uh, off base when he says, I, I need a place for five, uh, challengers and I'm like, yeah, right, you know? So he sent me a picture with five challengers and trying to figure out where to park them out there, so. You guys, you wouldn't think that we'd have five challengers coming into Temple, Texas, but that one time, we got five, six challengers sitting out here. Uh, you know, you're trying to tell your people to use a smaller plane.
Your flag needs more money.
Forty three, we have forty three thousand dollars. Do increase that tie down and another one of those projects that aren't, um. Specific to an increment, how do you say, I'm gonna go spend, uh, uh, another ten million out here and I don't have no increment, i- i- and it's tough. I always like to get, you know, the mayor over here, cause he's saying, man, you guys could sure help us from the zone and, and spend some of your dollars and help us, well. You know, a hundred percent of the funds we do out here is, is non-increment, it is just making sure that our airport is, is the, the top notch and we. Adopted it as a project and have seen it through and we'll talk about that as we move on to, uh. You know, every, every day, somebody brings another project, you got a taxiway that goes across the end of a runway and they're saying, well, you need to extend it and get that taxiway around it. That was a write-up, though we helped fix that, we do the grant matches, so every year you can see that we give a hundred thousand dollars. About eight years ago, um, you know, what, I think David Blackburn came to us and said. Yeah, we could do that, but you know, the grant, we gotta have a matching grant, a hundred thousand, he said, I don't have a hundred thousand in my budget and so. Believe you might have been the chair and said, hey, don't ever let a grant disappear. So what happens to us is we said that, now like twenty four, twenty five, twenty six, twenty seven, twenty eight, we got a hundred thousand dollars out there for matching grants so that we never lose that. So another one of those numbers, Tim, that yeah, the zone picks up, you know, this dollar amount that doesn't tie to anything to make sure that we as a community don't lose. A grant opportunity to make our airport. This one, and this is a good one for Tim, I think there's a lot of people really like.
It's once a year, you guys.
I get to talk about these, you guys, this is one of our gateways, it's the major part into our community, you know? And you can see that this thing is under construction, you got one chance to, when you come into Temple, Texas, you go everywhere from this intersection. And the state does nothing, you've seen it out there, it's their property, they won't mow it, they won't take care of it, they put a bunch of weeds out there, call them trees and they say, man, your community looks. Alright, and we didn't accept that as a zone, uh, the, the council does take heat, you guys, on projects like this, but. It is increment, this is grant funding that comes from the state, if you look at this, it, it's, it is taxpayers on the state level, but. Yeah, you know, it doesn't come, you know, that's hard to tell people, I know that, but. They don't understand this, but you know, this is a great project, we picked up some money from the state, got a couple of awards, uh, you know, Thomas Baird's infamous, uh. Geek Temple Beautiful Award and I'm not sure we've ever seen the money, but he keeps getting it for us, right, again, that project is.
About a million dollars, you got.
I think he did, it, it's real money. That's under construction, that's gonna be completed pretty quick, so hey, it's us, we're almost to the end of this thing. So the twenty thirty master plan, you guys, uh, was a huge change in the attitude of the reinvestment zone. And it is close to ten years ago that we started that plan, you can see we adopted it in twenty nineteen, it took us about. Three years to adopt it, so it was in twenty sixteen is when we started, that's when Bob was chairman. And so, you know, about every ten years, we, we re-up Bob, cause he's going to do round two, which is. But it's really important to understand the philosophical change that the zone did in twenty fifteen, twenty fourteen. Which was to, we had an E D director at that time, seriously, who believed in one thing, don't touch any money. Put it all in land in an industrial park, that's it, that's what the zone was, and, and we had to study that and, and, and we took all of the documents and we, and we looked at. What is it, what are we supposed to be doing, what is our mission and the mission was that we're the developer for the community for industrial, do job, that was it, right? That's what the mission is written and that's what's on page one of that. Is that what our mission is, job creation, we're the developers for the community, we take our zone dollars and we go out here and try to make sure that we can bring it in. The philosophical change that we did in, in this master plan, it's completely realized that it made E D C job easier. What you had to do is to take zone increment and to make this place better. So that they would choose Temple, not just because we have land sitting on the ground, because we had a lot of land sitting on the ground, people not wanting to really come. And we couldn't figure that out, and so when you study. And so when you study, uh, and, and as the group matured from a bunch of young people like us. Which we were young back then, to the older people who said, don't touch the money. And so when I got on here, when you got on here, Gary, right? And you and I still hold to that degree sometimes, like that money should be used for economic growth, right? That increment. And, and, and this document changed us and we started spending a lot of money. On stuff that has virtually nothing to do with economic growth that makes our place better. And I bring that up because we are now going into the twenty forty master plan. Everything I showed you on this, um. Uh, presentation today finishes out the twenty thirty master plan. So if you took the time to read this document. And you looked at the projects that I just went through and you said, what haven't I done? And what haven't I finished? It, it, we're, we're done. And so that's why we gotta look at what are we gonna do in twenty fourteen, which is a good time to reflect. You know, we got two hundred fifty thousand dollars. That was where the slide ended. I, 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 I got thinking about this, um, three days ago, um. And I added these slides, sorry. Um, I just added some slides to think about this, you guys. To, to reflect on twenty thirty master plan, one point three million in, in our gateways that we have spent for the east loop. You know, you can go through those, the conceptual plans, you know, east outer loop, what we're doing over to gun, gun club. You know, the schematic times, you know, one point five, that you, you can't really go say, where's my increment, right? Crossroads, eight point three million dollars that, you know, Kevin, you, you know this and you, you constantly tell almost everybody you can. That, that the zones helping get the dollars is what made that crossroads part happen. The, you know, for this community, you go out, try to figure out what the, what this increment is. From that, you're not gonna find it. You're gonna take people like Gary, me and some of the old people that used to sit around this table and they would hang us. To say that we spent eight point three million dollars in zone dollars, right, on the park. But it changed our community and it took eight point three million dollars off of your capital improvements budget. So that you have money so you can go do other things. And so there's been this question, people ask us sometimes, what? What are you doing for us lately? You know, where's, what, well, you guys got a lot of increment, you know, where, where's it go? You know, and. I, i- i- and so we, so we did change our attitude and, and, and in our presentation. We just said, we, we need to expand that. We need to clean that field up. We need to make sure that we can get that retail ready to go. You, you talked to all the restaurants and when a baseball team comes into town, everyone knows restaurants gotta double their staffs, right? It has a huge economic impact for our community. This zone, this board, past board members have allowed this. Us to work with the city and to do quality of place projects that have enhanced it, that has made it easier for Adrian to go out there and say, you know what? Your employees will like coming to this community because we do have a part. And, and so, you, you know, it isn't just, hey, come to Temple, Texas, because we have land and we can build a, a building and we got sewer. They wanna know if their people can live here and enjoy a quality of life, all right? And I'm preaching because that's where we're heading with this twenty forty master plan. Nineteen million dollars in T bid, right? You, 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 you read this and tell me how I got any increment, right? First street gateway, right? Avenue U, just so that we can go get people from Scott and White over to. Um, the V A and the temple, right? That intersection is kind of like the boulevards. You know, you got Friar Street, that hiking bike trail. Bob, what'd you do? You and I spent, we picked this project up. I can tell you this history. I'm, I'm sorry that I'm wasting your guys' time, but. You, you know, Bob and I get this set of plans. They ask us if we can go build this plan. This is twenty four, twenty fifteen. And, and I got a hiking bike trail sitting on the middle of nothing out there. And we had to, again, go sit on, on sixth floor Scott and White, beg those people to build that. Little hiking bike trail. And they gave us the land, you know? Nineteen point six million of zone dollars have gone into making sure that the area around Scott and White stood, our fire creek, that. That monumentation, you know, the master plan, you got, you know, all, all those projects. You try to put a, put an increment onto that, you know, how much you're getting that. Airport, you know, twenty-one million dollars and you guys, that, that, that is, uh. We adopted them and put a black fence around that, if you guys remember, and. And at some particular point, it'll be great because you're gonna have all those old people gone. There'll be young people and they won't remember that we were not gonna touch the airport. And, and we decided, let's go put a black fence around it. Twenty-one million dollars later, we're getting FBO out there. Look at all these projects and we are not, it doesn't stop. You know, put an increment on that, you know, and take twenty-one million dollars to get back on the, and the, uh, city budget, you know? So we have taken increment that, that is coming in and have spent it to loosen the load on the city. So that you guys could go do other things and we can, and make it. It's just interesting. Number seventy, the, the, you, you gotta understand that, that when I wrote these down. But these aren't our, all our projects. These are project dollars that I can't even attach the increment to. I just, and, 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 and the reason I bring this up is because that was the philosophical change of the zoning board. For the twenty thirty master plan, we said, look, let's help the city move projects along that'll make our city better. Because it's very difficult for the city to go out and do some of these projects and it's easier for the zone to do it. And so. Downtown, this is every one of our projects down there. This is not, this isn't have the city center in there. It doesn't have any of our grant funding. It doesn't have any project that was a project that created an increment. This is the projects that don't. Santa Fe Market Trail, where's your increment on that? Right? Your sale, the rails, the safety zones, you know, paying for the master plan, creating a rail safety zone, you know, the monumentation, the. Martin Luther King Festival fields, you know, we went and bought all those houses, took all that land, took all that power, took all this stuff down, right? And did a couple, attach a, a, an increment to that, right? This is your downtown projects. Right? This is interesting. This was a very important day, uh, in the zone. When we had a meeting in this office here, you'll remember that meeting, you know, and. It, it was one of those bullets that we took, but you, you, can you help us? Can the zone help us? We're paying two point four million dollars to E D C to making sure that they exist and that they can do what we did. But you know, they're really doing it for you, the zone. You guys are the ones doing all this. So will you pick up that two million for a year, right? And we said, yeah, it wasn't the easiest day, but, you know, two point seven million dollars, we said, yeah, we'll, we'll pick that up on the zone, make sure that zone's there. You know, a million dollars a year for transforming Temple to making sure that downtown is clean. And that's all it was gonna be. All right. Started at four hundred, it's a million dollars a year. It's really important for everybody to know that, that sometimes our tax dollars are out there, but a million dollars a year, we make sure that our parks, Kevin, right? And you, you and I worked on this really hard. It took every track of land. We, uh. Made a file. We looked at how much you spend on it so that it didn't hit your budget. When we go out there and have a green spot, that we made sure we covered our part of. And parks. And we just recently, I think, uh, re-looked at that and adjusted that number. We need to constantly do that. So we're paying our way there. To me, I just, you, you, when you look at that, you, you know, a hundred twelve million dollars in a ten-year period on what I would call non-increment producing projects. Why did I bring this all up? There's two reasons. One, it, it's for us to reflect on that, that we are paying our way as a zone. On projects that we are able to take off of the budget so that what we can do is to make sure that this community is better. And I bring that up because this is the end, right? To know that we're going into twenty forty. Right? And we're trying to decide what is it we're going to do. It lays out the financing plan. For the next ten years. The, i- i- and we're gonna finish what we did on the front end of this presentation, right? Which is a good hundred and ten, hundred and seventeen million dollars worth of projects, right? We've done a hundred and eighteen million dollars worth of projects. We're spending four million dollars a year, every year to make sure that we pay our way. What are we gonna do in twenty? What is, is this committee gonna look like? What is our part gonna be in twenty forty? Bob has a, a, a committee put together. He is going to start that. And, 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 and the project committee will be a big part of that and, and our responsibility and the council's responsibility and public works responsibility and T D C's. And, and part of all of this is to sit down and say, what the hell's this community gonna look like in twenty forty? What, what projects can we begin to look at? How do we expand our boundaries? What's that twenty nineteen water sewer master plan look like? We're gonna look at our C pack and see what is our comprehensive plan saying we're gonna do? Where are our growth areas? How do we deal with the current annexation law where you can't annex? How do you deal with the fact you can't get an E T J anymore? And what is it? What are we gonna look like? That's, that's what we're gonna do in the next six months. I think I'm done.
John, thank, thank you for that. By the way.
Yeah.
And, and I didn't know you were gonna bring that forward this, this morning, but that, that's a good information. Historical. To bring it to today.
Yeah.
You know, in our twenty twenty-four financing plan, which round numbers a hundred million dollars in projects. By my calculation, thirty-seven million dollars, that a hundred million dollars are city of temple projects. More, more of what you're talking about. The zones taking on, using the zone dollars to do things that otherwise would be picked up by the city, okay? So I mean, I, again, to, to echo what you just said, I think the amount of money that the reinvestment zone. Investing in our city is tremendous, is tremendous. And to me, we just can't lose focus. Of, again, you touched on it in, when you started this, the value and, and our, our commitment, our, our responsibility to help economic development. And continue to drive employment for our community, for our region for the next forty or fifty years, okay? Not to be distracted by a new shiny object that flashes in front of our eyes, but to remain focused on that. So. I think, I think what you just did reminds us of that. And again, bringing it to current date, thirty-seven percent of what we're doing in twenty twenty-four city projects.
It, 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 and it isn't a rock. I mean, you're not. You gotta realize that we made that decision in twenty sixteen, twenty seventeen to do that. And, 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 and history's important for new board members and, and we're gonna add more new board members. And you're gonna see some of the older people disappear. But to realize that the original zone was to take economic growth. We sat around this table, the old guys, and fought to, to just do one project. Five hundred thousand dollars, had to beg this board and the council to give us five hundred dollars, five hundred thousand dollars to do a downtown project. It, and I took all kinds of heat on it, I mean, and everybody, one person allowed us to do this. And that was Kiefer Marshall, the mayor at that time. And, and he changed the board member that sat right here. And because that board member didn't wanna do it. Steve, you don't remember that whole process, right? And that guy disappeared because he was fighting the fact that that five hundred was gonna be a bad deal for downtown. Board change, new, new president, and actually your daddy ended up being in that seat. That's who ended up taking that seat. Personal friend with Kiefer and Kiefer said, you know what? If we're gonna make Temple better, we gotta take our downtown and do it. And, and that man did a big thing. He allowed us to take five hundred thousand dollars. The first five hundred thousand dollars out of the zone, we didn't have much money to change. Because he, he, as the mayor, didn't have an ability to figure out how to do downtown. A victory lap for this group. I, I believe this and I don't mean to stand on this soapbox, but we, as the zone, single-handedly have changed downtown. Fifty-eight million dollars of zone dollars focused in. And the increment, we, you know, Gary, you've asked this question, I think, a hundred times, is what is the increment? Can somebody tell me how much my fifty-three million has brought us in in an increment? It's difficult to get that answer, but you've asked for, but i- 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 in. That twenty thirty master plan, we as a community, all of us said, let's do this. Let's change the quality of place. But there is no question that, that, that should be noted. It should be celebrated and it should be reflected on. That the majority of the dollars, the, the increment that is given to us from our taxing entities. Are the largest contributor to the zone. The taxing entity, city's eighteen percent of that zone money. Eighteen percent comes from the city tax. All the rest come from B I S D, from, from Troy and from T I S D. From the county that would, you know, they're, they're, they're the ones that put this in here and it's replaced by the, you know, by the state, that money. We have taken seventy percent of that money to change the quality of place. Take those dollars out of that city budget and allow the city budget to do other things. So we have a quality of place so that when you go out there, bring some of this community, they say, you wanna know something? This doesn't look like the old railroad town that we adopted in, in one, in nineteen ninety-four. I guess was my first day on this thing. You know, we, that's a very different city, a very different downtown. A very different, uh, hospital, right? A very different airport. And so you guys, to end it again. What does this look like going forward? Because it, it is us that have got to do it in, in working with the, the council. And what, what are we, what is this? What are we gonna spend that money on? How are we going to be stewards of the state dollars that are given to us? And our taxing entity dollars to make our community better, make your job better, high-quality jobs. You know what? That, the more people want a six-dollar dollar, I'm not getting down on the old people, but they, we were driven by, let's make sure that we take our average salaries. Right? And keep it five bucks a foot. At the exact same time, you had a hospital out here with the highest paying jobs, right? What we've asked our E D C staff and board to do, raise that. Let, let's raise that. Let's get to where we're not the, the lowest. You know how you get it, you know, Whole Foods here or something like that? You can't be on the lowest end of the whole scale, pay scale, and Temple has got to raise its. Average housing salary and, and that's not easy to bend that line. And so we've talked about that in our neighborhood plan is to making sure, you, you, you can't have your old neighborhoods go down. You gotta bend a line. You gotta turn it. Someday you gotta get that thing turned. You know, that's, that's why we got Avenue C, it's why we got Henderson, it's why. We're gonna go spend money in some of those places because we don't want those areas that line to bend down. You gotta turn that damn line up. If, if you turn that line up, all the dollars come up. If we raise the boat, everybody's going, it's not that old saying, you know, you. Raise everybody in a, we all ride, whatever the heck that is. That's what we're doing. You know, that's, that's what we're doing. And I'm preaching, and you won't get it again, you guys. This is this year.
Thank you for that. The work that goes into that is amazing and it's, it's a lot of work and it's, and we're all here to make Temple better. And, and I think as we move into the master plan, that will be the whole thing to do, make it Temple better, secure in the future and all that, uh, local boards, uh. They're working on that over the months. They take a couple of years to put it all together to take all the stakeholders to come together. But put together a good plan that we execute, you can see what happens when you do a lot of good planning, things happen.
Tell me what you're working on, though. I mean, really, and what it, what you will do to get that twenty forty kicked off.
Well, we'll end up bringing out presentations from probably fifty different stakeholders in the community. From the ISDs, you know, community college, uh, city staff, uh, Scott and White. I mean, it will be, you know, the railroad, Tex dot, you know, all of those will have. Uh, you know, they'll come in, present their master plans, what they're, how they see the next twenty years and what their challenges are. And we'll take all of that is, uh, putting our projects together to address all of those issues in our community. It's a, it, it's a long process to come together and do that, but it. Ends up being, I, I think, a very productive process, a good process, produces good projects. I mean, one thing that this. Group has done, I think extremely well, has put together master plans that can be executed. If you look at the downtown plan that's being executed right now, that was adopted, you know, twelve, fifteen years ago. Was put together by this group. And it's, if you look at it, it goes, wow, this is exactly what's occurring. In every sector of our community where we put a master plan together, we execute. That includes water, sewer, roads, all of that. The strategy of the northern acquisition of land. For expanding the industrial park because we are running out of land. Anyway, it'll be exciting times in the future to pull that together. And thank you, John, for putting that all together. Anybody have any questions? John? Adrian, next time to receive a project update from the Economic Development Corporation.
I think I'm the only one saying between you and the rest of your day, so. I, I don't know where to begin, but, uh, I will say, really appreciate it again, with the zone does here and it's reflected in this presentation today. Uh, you really hit on John a lot of what is important to us all. We talked about Synergy Park. I'll talk about North Park later on at some time, but I'll tell the board that we're in negotiation, we're finalizing negotiations. Two letters of intent down in the Synergy Park area. Uh, we own a little over three hundred acres down there. Uh, and we're now at a point where every other week we're getting interest in that area. And we're in a position now where that folks coming in and they're trying to get in second or third position behind the people we're negotiating. And, you know, data centers, technology, we've talked about it, that's my, is a huge driver, uh, to where the Texas economy is going, where the national economy is going. And I think Temple stands to be squarely in the middle of that. I'll actually have a board retreat scheduled for middle of April. Uh, there's some considerations with respect to that conversation. What is our potential for more to go forward? Uh, and electric is at the center of that. So fortunate enough, tentatively, uh, we have the Director of All Development, the corporate. Uh, coming in to speak to our board and we'll be inviting some of the R Z members to maybe participate in that part of our. Or retreat discussion. He'll spend about an hour and a half of us. Give us a full landscape of not only. Uh, the grid in the state of Texas, but specifically what he's hearing from industries that are high or heavy power users. That are looking at Temple. And what is our position? You can talk about forward planning. What are some of the things that we need to be thinking about from an electric infrastructure standpoint? And what are their plans in this particular area, little electric standpoint to build that up? So we have to. So thank you again for your partnership. We look forward to being with you in the future months to talk about more. So thank you again for your partnership. We look forward to being with you in future months to talk about more development.
Thank you. Next item, receive a project update, city manager, there's.
I think Mr. Keela did a wonderful job at bringing this up today, many projects. The only thing I would add is that Poison Oak will be open on Monday, so that's exciting. The, the signal on three seventy, Poison Oak will be fully operational, so.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, next item is scheduling next board meeting, I believe, which will be March the twenty-seventh, Wednesday of March. And no other items will be adjourned.